All right, I will call the work session in session for November 23rd, 6:00 PM. We'll do a roll call. Avi, I'm here, Jesse is excused, Nick is excused, and Lee is excused. John?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
And Todd?
I'm here.
All right. All right, we understand, we do have some, someone who would like to make public comments, so you can take your three minutes and probably even a little more if you need that. Generally, what we'll do is we'll just ask you to state your name and your address so that we have for the record as to who is here and if you're going right ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jeff Lund, and I'm here with my wife Pam. We recently purchased a home at 1390 Lakewood Road, about six months ago. Happy to come into the neighborhood and the community. We've, we're wanting to plan on building a whole barn, additional accessory building, I guess, on the property for some storage and dry storage. From taking, talking with Steve and performing a little bit of research, I noticed a couple of things that I found in the zoning, that the township has very little ag zone parcels. Majority of them are R1 or R2. And there are lots of R1 zone parcels that are larger than 10 acres in the township also. You know the zoning, but the AG districts are five acres or less, accessory buildings for up to 2,400 square feet, five acres or more, four accessory buildings with a total area of 4,000 square feet. But in the R1 and R2 and LR districts, the parcel of more than one acre or up to five acres with the four accessory building is up to 2,400 square feet, which is the same as the AG or the RG districts. But the parcel of more than five acres is only an area up to 3,000 square feet, which is 1,000 less than the AG district. So I was looking at that and since, thinking since the AG and the R1 maxes are built with the same properties of the five acres or less being the 2,400 square feet, it would make reasonable sense to be consistent between both of the zoning districts for the properties having more than five acres. The property we own is 10 acres, so...
And what is it zoned, were you?
R1.
R1.
Yes. So my request, I would request for consideration or discussion or both, that the R1, R2, and LR district parcels that have five acres or more be allowed to have accessory building total floor areas of up to 4,000 square feet, that is similar with the AG. Or an additional opinion to consider would be to allow for the R1 district to have parcels of 10 acres or more to have the 4,000 square feet, or even more than that because of the acreage. I have a 40 acre, a 30 acre, several larger parcels. And in my opinion, and what we were thinking about is that modifying the accessory totals would not only be more consistent for the two zoning districts, but it would also eliminate the need for costly and time-consuming variances that I would have to present in order to get a barn that I would like, not only to me and my family, but to past, to present and future homeowners of that, in that district. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring up for, for a discussion or to consider before you tonight.
Anybody have any questions? So you're currently, you're, you said you're in R1 and you have 10 plus acres?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, at this point, you were allowed up to 3,000, you said?
3,000 square feet, yes.
See, it's 4,000 in the acre C, and then these zones is 3,000. The smaller ones are the same, but the big one is different.
And obviously, I'm new here, so I don't know.
These are the, some of the things we've been working on, trying to get them more on the same level.
And I don't know why, what would there be a reason to have? What section was it?
It's...
1-2.
Yep.
Okay. What you're saying is across those three, you want anything 10 acres or more to be allowed to be at 4,000 square feet, is what you're saying? Like that would be...
Either the five acre or more could be the 4,000, and/or the 10 acres or more, since there are a lot of parcels that are larger, that it goes at least up to that amount, if not more.
We've all kind of taken upon ourselves to try to condense it down, so rather than adding one, I would rather look at expanding the one. I think makes sense to say, it seems a lot, a lot cleaner rather than bending, you know, 10 acres and five acres, and then we'd have to say, well, let's say between five and 10.
Correct.
You know, to me...
That would make sense.
You know, I'd rather, at least, again, just speaking off the cuff, but certainly something that we should, we do this quite regularly, we do these work sessions for this reason, we are the first ones, so our experiment, we appreciate that, for you guys being here, to be a work in progress here.
Well, my past has been in real estate, and I'm excited to live here, but I wanted to research a little bit, and since I'm interested in building, I said, well, what is the difference or why was that?
Okay. So here's the good news, that's before any of us, so anything you say doesn't offend us at all, so I believe me that, we appreciate that.
Does the, I have a question, does the 4,000 square foot cause the building to be higher through the slope of the truss, or?
You, I know from talking with my builders that you can get different, different angles, edges for that, so I don't think that the, I believe it's 20 foot maximum would be affected by that, by the way, of different types of trusses.
One of our members is a general contractor who's been on this committee for many years, and I wish he was here tonight. I can't answer to why, I'm not, I haven't been here for that long myself, but more than likely, there was intentions made here with these numbers to calm it down in a residential property versus ag. I don't know, it's not anything I can, I guess interpolate from reading the language, but I know 10 acres is a pretty good size of property.
Yeah, lot coverage is not an issue, you're well within.
Is it, would it be close to the road, is it deep, wide, narrow, you know? That's one thing somebody probably would ask.
Yeah. We're, we're currently at 330s by 1320, so that it is a rectangular 10.
That's a nice one, yeah.
However, with the way that the, Russ, we bought it from Russ Christensen, and he built the house further back, and so the logical spot, because he had a clearing already set, would be in front of that, but I have to address the setback for the front of the road also.
Right.
And that may be meeting a variance, meeting also, but the square footage, we already have an accessory building, a smaller two-stall garage that's 900 square feet already, and so building one, I want to just make it worth it, if I'm going to build one, have enough room for, honestly, starting up a home-based business and wanting to have some space for storage, some dry storage.
That helps us there, we can put that on our, do we add that for next week?
That's Tuesday, we'll be back.
Just put in a draft amendment for review.
Yeah. I, to me, this is one that, I wish I could give you a really smart answer, and say, well, it's because the Vetsor valve, or whatever, there's nothing I can see that...
I have a funny feeling that the reason is, so, as I've been reading this wonderful book, a lot of things in here are, the R1, R2 districts are more restrictive simply because you think of that as a residential area, but you forget that there's huge parcels in this residential area, so as, in the last few months, I've only been on here for like six or so months, but we've been kind of taking the attitude of, what does your land look like, instead of what zoning district are you in? Because it makes much more of a difference to me personally, how big your land is than and where you are, so.
Sure.
I think that might be why, because R1 tends to be more restrictive, just for, because it seems like it makes sense, even though it doesn't.
So did you have a footprint in mind, width, length, the, if it was 4,000?
If it, it would allow, that's an extra thousand, so that's quite a jump. I'm looking at, instead of a, wanting to go a 40 by 50, it would allow me to go 40 by 60, or 65, 70, or up to that size, but with a 40-foot width, it all, if I fall right underneath that, because I'm already burning up 100, 986 square feet, it would allow me to get another A, basically, another garage.
Because he would be, he would qualify for three, correct?
For 3,000.
Three buildings.
No, it says two, where, no, isn't it?
You go up to four buildings.
Oh, yeah, four, yeah.
Up to four total.
So you're, you're well within that, we had a discussion on that also, we had, we don't have a clue where two came from at one point, we had, somebody said, you know, two buildings, that's it.
Yeah.
And we have no reference as to why that would be the case, you know, it's your land, you want to do something out of it that makes sense, I mean, who are we to say, oh, two...
Yeah, this is right up our alley, we've been looking at things just like, where nobody really remembers why something is the way that it is, and they're just trying to make it a little more logical.
Great. I'm glad I could bring this up to you.
Do you intend to, or do you prefer to have standard height garage doors for those tall, drive your semi-truck in kind of doors?
Not semi-truck or even motor home, but a 12-foot high door is a standard for a bull barn with 14 or 16 feet high walls, just so you don't hit anything, but that's what my builder recommended to me, was just that they...
Those are qualifiers, I'm just trying to get a picture.
Yeah.
You know, and we discuss these kind of things.
You know, I would basically, instead of having three stalls, three doors, I would be able to have a fourth with that extra 20 feet in length or so too. But I understand that the location will, it will determine on how large I can go, and that location will, is not your, in the planning, so, but I do have a spot for it, so I was just curious on this, and I said, well, I kept talking with, with Steve, and I said, why is this? And he said...
This is what we're looking for, because now we have, we have a couple that actually can say, here's what we're thinking, but we're just looking at it going hypothetically, what if, does this make sense? You're giving us practical things, so thank you for that.
Sure.
And that definitely helps us to weed one of these things out of the way, and we're, we've kind of committed to, if we add something, we're taking two things out, you know, so this helps us, so we can say, maybe we can bind that into, I mean, why wouldn't we, you know, at that point, I guess we'd have to look at, could we condense it to, why would we need the differences? You know, I mean, I understand the residential versus, you know, we have Lake District stuff, we have, right, you know, and that's lot coverage driven, particularly because of the size of the lots. These are big parcels of property that you're not going to offend somebody if you have 10 acres, to say, well, that's, you know, usually it's the things that, that, the setbacks and things that there's lights on the outside that shine in another dwelling or something like that, you know, that's, that's the kind of stuff we have, where we've had to have berms or things put in, or dogs' burry.
Or not, somebody's view of the lake, things like that.
It was just interesting to find that the, the smaller, the one that buys or buy or less were the same, but I just said, hmm, so, yeah, I'm glad, glad to bring that up, and if you consider it or bring it up at the next meeting for consideration, that would be great.
Are you thinking like spring?
I'd like to.
Well, that's, we're just trying, it helps us aspire this timeline, we definitely, it takes us, we have to go through some processes, the changes, we have to have a public hearing, and there's I's dotted, T's crossed, and things, but it's within the, I think, a reasonable time to say, that would give us enough time to, this is one that, that makes too much sense to have to go, wait a minute, what are we doing here? This, this looks good.
We threw more of them than this.
Thank you, please do.
I, if you ever can't sleep back, I guess, like I said, I do have a real estate background, so I'm familiar with some things, but I haven't gone in front of townships before, but I, like I said, we're glad to be here and enjoy it so much.
Pretty bull barn oriented around here.
Well, that's good, that's good. If you ever want to start a conversation with any neighbors, just start talking about sheds or bull barns, and everybody goes, really, where'd you get yours? It's next to getting owned.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, thank you for your, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's one I would, I would, you know what?
Well, because they, it says that it was 627, or 621 of, this year, 627, so we looked at this and didn't catch it when we amended.
And originally from?
Yeah, from 18, then, yeah, there were several of them, it was amended in 20 again on my book, and we looked at it in June and didn't notice at all.
I think we were just dealing with the number of accessory buildings.
Yes, we were dealing with the number that you could have for buildings, we changed it from two to fours.
Okay.
I have a question, now that I, I just read 2-C, so parcel more than five acres, there shall be no more than two accessory buildings, it sounds like you already have one building?
Yes, that's correct.
With a total floor area of up to 3,000 feet, so 3,000 less what you already have, okay, that was interpreted what you're, we're asking up here, you want an additional, if you could have, or everybody approve it, an additional 4,000 square foot?
No, he wants, he wants one C to match two C.
Yeah, a total, not, not an additional 4,000, but I'm already burning up 900 and...
Okay, that's why I asked you the footprints of that, okay, I understand.
One B and two C.
I want a sum total of that 3,000.
Yeah, it's, we want one B and two C to be the same, or if we combine those and we get to a stage, I'm sorry.
Right.
You probably love the abstract.
You know, they always say you can never build a building up hard, of course, if you feel that outside, but...
Yeah, you're right.
Yep.
Yeah, this just shows you, we literally just went through this, doesn't speak too well to me, and can I speak out the record, please? Well, I think, I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense here. All right, would you, we also, we have time, if you'd like to speak, we, you, okay?
I'm just being the moral support, because he wants a bull barn. That would make me my life easier.
All right, we have, we have that as the wife clause. All right, then we will close the...
There was a, there was another gentleman said he would be here, but isn't, he rented an issue where he's zoned, he and his neighbors are zoned C2. Correct. So they're in a commercial district, they're all non-conforming residential uses in a commercial zoning district. As a result of Chapter 18, non-conforming uses cannot, they can continue, but they cannot be expanded, so you can't add on to the house, you can't add an accessory building. So essentially, they would need to meet a variance, or something would need to change. They asked about the potential of rezoning the properties from C2 to either agricultural or R2. R2 was across, so it's on Tyler, Tyler and Russell.
I'll show you on the panel here, so I want to see them.
So it's these, so there's the car place right here.
Yeah.
And then there's four lots that have houses on them. They're all, all residential buildings, they'd like to eventually, they came up because the gentleman wanted to pull permit for detached garage, and he could...
When you say units, you're speaking about single-family detached?
Yes, single-family dwellings.
With, with multiple units on one...
No, just one unit per property.
Okay.
Single, like, single-family houses.
And each of those four properties are C2?
Correct.
That's a mess, how did that happen?
Why are they C2, they've always been houses, right?
I'm not sure, I looked at the master plan, the future land use map, the two larger lots to the, on the west side, to the west are zoned for, are dedicated for resource conservation district, and the other two are indicated as commercial on the future land use map. His goal was to talk to the neighbors and see which would be interested in rezoning, if they'd like to rezone, or if they'd like to stay as commercial. But he, and he said the neighbor to his east would be interested in potentially being rezoned, so that they can expand their houses or build bull barns.
Is he one of those two really long parcels, or is he one...
He's one of the two long parcels.
Okay. Is, is he the one closer towards Russell, or is he the one...
He's closer to Russell, so he's right on the creek.
Okay. So then he has one neighbor with a long parcel just like his on the other side of him?
Correct.
So this would be one of those where with four parcels, if three say yes and one says no, is that considered spot zoning then, or is that something?
I wouldn't consider it spot zoning, because it's adjacent...
To already...
Right.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, if it's, because we're, if it's...
Or, it's also adjacent to the R2 use, here, the R2 zoning district, so if they wanted to be R2, then it'd be up to you if that was appropriate. I think the largest lot is about two and a half acres, and then the next is about one and a half, maybe one and three quarters, then the other two are all, the other two are both under an acre.
Would changing the zoning affect their tax?
I don't believe so.
Issue?
Because I believe tax is based on the present use, not the zone.
Would...
I did, there was a case back in 2019.
This is a hypothetical, would changing their zoning affect their value of the property?
It can, if you change them from a commercial to residential, but it's just...
You know, there was a case in 2019 where, it was on Tyler and, Tyler and Whitehall, where there were some properties on commercial, but they were all houses, and letters went out saying, hey, if you want to be rezoned to residential, please let us know, and we'll, we'll include you on the rezoning. And I know a number of those houses were rezoned residential, and it was the same situation where they, somebody wanted to build a bull barn or accessory building, and she wanted to pull the permit, found out she couldn't do that.
Do you have any idea when those homes were built?
I could look it up, but I don't know if it...
Yeah, being so close to the freeway and the off-ramp and so on and so forth, it is sort of odd that, you know, 30 years out, this is going to be a marathon and a McDonald's, you know, I just think about the future.
Good luck in municipal well, it's sort of there, that's, nothing will ever happen at Russell until they have municipal services, that's why nothing, you see McCormick's septic for their gas station, it's insane.
Yeah.
I just find it weird that when they, because clearly those were rezoned at some point to, I don't know why you would make houses commercial ever, like, I just don't...
Or why was it not rezoned when they pulled their building permit to build a house there?
I'm sure it was residential when the houses were built, and then they, when they did the master plan at some point, they thought, oh, we should change these because Laird is right there.
I see what you mean.
And they kind of included too many parcels in there, let's rezone this corner.
The master plan, the future land use map, doesn't include two of the parcels...
Oh.
In the commercial designation, two of those parcels, the two larger ones, are in the ag designation.
That makes more sense.
So the ones on the east side of the creek, those two smaller lots are zoned, are designated for commercial, but the two on the west side of the creek...
It's across the street, they're in RV Park Camp.
Oh, yeah, Lake Shenepahoe is right across Russell from those parcels, yeah.
And that is zoned C2.
Right, which makes sense, I suppose, although we're zoned ag, so nothing really makes sense. I could be, I could see being very frustrated with that, when you have a house and it's always been a house, and suddenly you realize you're in the commercial district, and it's not, it's not like it's Whitehall Road or M20.
Where you're sitting on a more value than you realize.
The corner maybe, but I...
Yeah, yeah.
He doesn't know if the gentleman on the corner would like to be rezoned.
If I was that guy, I'd say it was a...
He said, at least both neighbors on both sides of him indicated to him that they would like to be residential.
So...
They would like to send letters up to the permit.
Scratch, or...
So if you sent that to all four property owners and said, this is the situation, would they all need to come in and agree to that? We couldn't, we couldn't change it if they're not requesting it, correct?
They could fill out a form. I believe in 2019, what happened was, I believe the township took it upon itself to rezone the lots of anybody that wanted to be rezoned, and then sent out letters to anybody who was a residential use in a commercial zone, and asked if they wanted to be included. And if they filled out a form stating that they would like to be included, then they were included.
They did that in Flutman Township too.
Is that how we got to that? Is that possibly how we got those four tracks that were originally something else and became commercial, or were they always commercial?
Before.
The, before we're talking about right now, or...
No, those were always residential, but somewhere along the line, they were rezoned to commercial.
Do we know when that happened?
I don't.
Okay.
See, that's what I'm wondering, 100...
Because this is 2019, so clearly it was...
That was not in the 2019 amendment though, I know the 2019 amendment...
Okay, so it was prior to 2019.
So that was when that actually took rezon, the other Tyler and Whitehall area, from commercial to residential. So is that something that you'd like the township to initiate?
Yeah, I would feel better about them initiating and seeing, because if residents all say, yeah, we're, that would be an easy fix. If we get to the three and one, somebody may be stating that it stays commercial, but certainly four lots like that don't make sense, I'll be commercial right now, having, having as presidents, I guess it...
How do you decide whether, I mean, to me, it makes the most sense for them to join the ag, instead of having a little R2 across the street, but how do you, how do you decide that? I mean, obviously, looking at the book, it's kind of important when you choose, because the...
Yeah, so the two lots on the west side of the creek would definitely fit the bill for ag.
Ag, okay.
They're, they're smaller than five acres, but there's a lot of... They're, they're smaller than five acres, but there's a lot of lots in the ag that are smaller than five.
Would they still be like a non-conforming use though? Because in ag, you have to...
No, it would be, um, single family residences are permitted uses in the ag district.
But don't you have to have at least five acres for?
That would just be the lot would be non-conforming.
Okay.
But it can still be built on.
Gotcha. Okay.
Could I speak to that? Maybe I have a couple of thoughts.
Right.
On one hand, a commercial property, if it's a single family residence, is very, very difficult to get financing if they were ever to sell their home and get, buy a commercial lot with a traditional mortgage, if it was zoned commercial. On the other hand, most people think that when they go to sell, they're, some Walmart's gonna come in and...
Right.
And we actually had a property that, that worked like that where they'd buy the square foot of the lot instead of fair market value. So like, there's two sides on that, but as far as financing goes, they are in a detriment tremendously. I mean, no, nobody will be able to get traditional financing for a commercially zoned, single family residence.
That's a great point. When you said realtor experience, I knew you could help.
I was just thinking about that, but ag is not a problem.
So it worked when we did that one thing that way to bait you to come in to help.
I am happy. I'll buy you when the next chair comes available.
So, yeah, I think, I think the township should initiate contact with these four parcels and see what if they were, be interested in being rezoned to something more appropriate for what they're actually doing on the land.
You can give them the either or if they'd like to go with the, the ag or if they'd like to go, and then they can look up and see what their intentions are.
They can read the book.
There you go.
Well, I definitely think the two of those lots are...
The two long big ones should be ag, yeah.
The smaller ones, they're about eight percent lot coverage.
Okay.
They're allowed ten in the ag. That gives them about three hundred and forty square feet if they ever wanted to add on or put up patio. There are two, they'd be allowed twenty-five percent lot coverage.
Oh.
The one on the corner is at about twenty percent lot coverage right now, but they already have a lot of improvements.
You'd be able to speak to them, or they're probably, you get that letter, the first person they're gonna contact will be you. You can speak to, you know, that to them and that really helps, plays out what their intentions may be. And if they're sitting good, that won't really matter, but anybody who wants to do some additional improvements, obviously that would,
Yeah.
that would have been bad though.
So an R two might, the two to the east of the creek, if there would be R two, that might be a better option for those two parcels or if they wish to remain commercial.
The houses on the north side of Tyler, they're on the north side?
North side of Tyler, yeah.
That big white two-story, I think, is the one around the corner. Did you wish your agenda?
Right here. I was, I said to see where I placed that here. All right, well, we will then close the public hearing at six thirty-three. And we will move on to our, we have the two new business, which the gun club. And then we also have the one for tree service.
I'd love to look at the gun club, um, member out there, but anyway, I've seen, talked to a couple guys who wear this, what are they calling it? A covered patio?
Yeah.
And it's really straightforward. I mean, they're taking some big yard oaks out of there and I don't think there's any, you know, grades, virtually perfect and ready to go. I don't see anything that I would be concerned about. Being indicated, as you probably read, there's no utilities run out to it. It's kind of surprising. I haven't put any lighting or electrical outlets. I thought maybe they use it for like barbecues or
This is late so long in the summer. We have lights in Archivillian that we never turn on because it's so light until like eleven o'clock at night.
That's a good point.
Maybe that's why they didn't want to bother with it.
Yeah. But I would notice, or have noticed, that if you're using the rifle range under that long rectangular setup there, it's actually a long bench, table. People set up their rifles and shoot their things down, down range. I could see where they would want to have more of a like a common spectator area. Back away from all the real action. Between the two, there's a, a security fence and ample warning signs and they look to be pretty disciplined. They recently joined.
So anyway.
Wow, that's a, so they're pushing the parking lot back because you used to be able to drive the park right around it?
Yeah, no.
It's been a few years since.
Yeah, no, there's like, there's some big oaks right here.
Wow, look at the tree.
The, the front door lodged right there and, I wish you could see this, but pretty simple. Gonna see what we're talking about. There's a little thing here. They want to do a little. It surprised me that gun club's been there since nineteen fifty-one or something like that. It's pretty well established. I shoot air guns by the way indoors, so I'm not, you know, that's my thing. But, um, it's pretty cool. It's a nice little resource. Cheap tool. I'm surprised they keep the lights on. It's very expensive.
Is there anything specific that's, that's required for something? Is it new covered patio? I mean, that's, it, what would that most resemble as far as our, we need to know?
Looks like a pole barn without sidewalks to me.
Yeah, essentially just a new, a new building. It agrees with lot coverage, but it's not, by no means is it anywhere close to exceeding the lot block coverage. It really doesn't increase the, doesn't increase the amount of business. It just provides people with a place to go.
Seven hundred and twenty square feet is what we're talking?
Yeah.
Does anywhere show the height of it? I'm sure it's well under the twenty-four, but I just didn't see if that was on any of these.
Twenty-four feet out of survey, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's the...
That's the leaning ice?
Yeah, that's what I saw too. I was surprised they gave us this many drawings and that one of them had a height.
Yeah, one of the notes on one of the pages, page three or four indicates, uh, trust bracing requirements will be determined with final trust design. So maybe the pitch is sort of, you know, there's a little variance there. They can go one way or the other.
Yeah, because the walls are eight feet or the, the top of this, the slab to the top of the wall, to the bottom of the truss is eight feet, but...
Yeah.
I'll just bring it home and have my husband.
I don't know. I can't.
Twelve four slope, twelve with each foot.
Definitely starting to know those, those construction terms.
Exactly.
I say it's twelve with a twelve foot. I don't know. What would Jesse say?
I'm not seeing a scale.
I feel like this is a math problem. They give you the slope of the truss and they give you the height of the wall. Now you have to figure out what the height of the building is.
I'll, I'll send him an email just for the, have him come ready with the, with the height.
Thank you.
There's a good scenario. I can sail it.
Yeah. It looks to me like it's gonna be less than fourteen feet tall, so it's well under the zoning.
I was trying to figure how, as soon as, as the math started to go up, so did I, like you. Yeah, my, my pay grade for sure. Everything else, that you can give me? Any other questions for anyone?
Lou?
All right. We'll move on to the Jelenic, the Jelenic tree trimming service. This is an existing, that they want to expand now?
Correct. It's an existing use. They began in 2019. I would classify them as a more building contractor, um, use-wise. They're replacing an old, you know, auto repair facility. It was approved by special use in 2001. And then they, um, if you'd like to put up a, a fence and store equipment in the rear of the building, in order to expand the use outside of the existing building, you would need to have planning commission for it.
So the building's gonna stay a, as it is?
Correct.
This is just, the request is just for a privacy slash security fence around the back of the building, I think?
Correct. It would go from the back.
Back being the east side?
Yeah, it'd be from the the north. Northeast corner of the building, straight up to the easement line, and then along the easement back to the tree line. And then you would also have a twenty-one foot section from the southwest corner of the building.
Oh yeah, I got you.
To the south property line, or that's a tree line. Front would have screen on it.
Dave, do you know where this building is? Are you familiar with it? I am. I drive by it every day, at least once or twice. Yeah, it's a nice building. It's on one twenty. Know where that church is? It's called God Saves, the sign in front, something. But anyways, on the east side of one twenty. Past the greenhouse on the right, going north. It's a nice looking building. He's kind of cleaned up that a lot. And right now, from what you, if, if you're driving, you look, you can see where he stores, you know, these enormous oaks. On the east side of his building and he indicates he, he's willing to store, seasonally store wood chips from his chipping machine.
There's the building. Yep, I know which one.
Yeah. Yeah, I, his idea is, you know, I think it's a good idea.
He's got five acres, so.
Yeah.
It's well within, yeah, there's this. Isn't that the archery?
Oh yeah.
What's the, what's the black rectangle right below the hundred and sixty-five feet? With the arrows? What, what is that telling me?
Good question.
I believe he wrote something and then crossed it off.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's tree line and then he decided to move tree line down.
Gotcha.
A really long board sheet fit or?
Shuffleboard.
Yes.
Really hit your work on this.
Shuffleboard.
This is another one of those that, you know, if you're making an improvement to the property.
I would say so.
And allowing better use.
I hired the guy a year or so ago. He left me the impression that he has pride of ownership, his equipment. He's very meticulous. He won't run his equipment in the salt on the roads, for example. And he's got some really modern stuff that people don't have to climb trees nowadays. They, yeah. They ask asset to that property. It was a car lot, right? With just like cars all scattered all over.
Yeah, it's auto repair.
Yeah, that's right, auto repair.
And even on the older aerials, it shows cars out in the back.
Oh yeah, yeah.
But he's been there since 2018?
Correct.
Okay, but he now, is that the point where he wants to make some changes or?
Yeah, there was a fence there previously, but the previous owner took the fence with him.
What? Okay then. Gotcha.
I think the aerial he provides, yeah, the aerial he provided was a 2014 aerial. You can see the fence coming off the corner of the building.
That's what I thought. I meant that really.
So you need this committee, Steve, to approve his request to install this fence essentially, right?
You'll approve a site plan?
Yeah, it'd be a site plan review so that he can use outdoor areas behind the fence.
And he's currently out of variance? That he just needs to amend the variance?
No, there's no variance.
Oh, there's no variance.
It's a special use?
Oh, special, I'm sorry.
There was a special use, but it was changed to a, to a permitted, another permitted use. So he didn't need any special use or site plan at the use at that time because he was only using the existing building. Unless I'm missing something, I don't think this one's...
He's put up a new sign recently.
That's what threw me off when I saw the pictures.
There's a lit sign that, um, it's fairly small, but hard to read. He tried to, this graphic design, he tried to get fancy with the J and Jelenic and... He tried to, just tried to design, he tried to get fancy with the J and Jelenic and.
He probably, that would be your sign now, change the sign.
Be able to be a sign. Trying to get too cute with it, but.
Yeah, I'll see, unless there's something, Jesse.
Jesse will find something.
Jesse will be our.
That's good though.
Yep.
Will he be here next week?
Yeah, I think everyone will just. If I didn't think about that, that's probably what it was. It could still be. Alright, I think those, those make sense. Alright, then we go into the discussion items. Chapter seventeen, an administrative review of site plans.
There's nothing in our packet for those, right?
No, you know, not in memo.
That was, was that the, we moved it to, like a, was there a ten, no, that wasn't the one with the ten percent additional. We didn't have to have it if they changed the site plan.
Yeah, that was the.
That was that.
Ten percent, and then also. Like further, there was the, there's section, in the sections, there was the part about the signs and outdoor lighting.
Oh, yep.
Yeah, seven point three H, eight and nine.
Yep, that will start here.
There's talk about maybe hitting those out or changing them. And then the increase or decrease in the area of land.
That's when you mentioned increase, reason if you were decreasing for review, but not if they were increasing, is that what it was?
Right, if you buy more land and, good, it'll decrease your lot coverage.
They don't have, if you review it, there's no fees or anything?
Oh yeah, you were gonna.
There's a two hundred and fifty dollars.
But you, it's just the expedition you.
But it's quicker.
Yeah, okay.
And the fees are all the same, at two fifty? Whether it's administrative ordinance or minor site plan review?
And the board can change that only?
The board can change that by resolution. You might be able to put in something into the zoning ordinance that says, you know, it's, minor changes are no fee. Check. I check with Lori to make sure that that can be put into the zoning ordinance. Ultimately, they would be approving that.
Was that pretty specific to what we had? There was more in that under page for, for the things that we're looking at, to see which ones we could. So it would be, if it was a decrease in the area of land. Have there any that you see that you? It's removing eight and nine.
Yeah, removing those would be good.
And was it number three? Was that the one that you said it was an increase or decrease in the area that you'd said it would be?
I think eight should still be removed, or should, it might be a good idea to have that still approved administratively. Just to make sure it's meeting the standards of the lighting, but with signs, that might be a little, a little much of an overreach.
So nine would still go through us, you think?
No, none would be.
No, eight.
None would be removed.
Okay, nine.
Then eight maybe either removed or still subject to administrative review. I'm just thinking of someone putting up a bunch of.
Lights can get ugly with adjacent parcels. People that don't put the correct lights in, and they just shine in their neighbors.
Right, floodlights that are aimed horizontally.
Right.
Or would you just enforce the lighting restrictions retroactively as the need comes up?
True, I think that's what Jesse was thinking when he wanted to take eight out.
Any others? I'm going to zoning requirements for sanitation businesses.
I'm kind of lost here on our agenda.
I am too, because I didn't print out the stuff from the packet, this is our packet to the meeting. And I don't have any service in this building. I was trying to look at my email.
I'm gonna make a copy of this.
Okay, thank you. Are you lost? Yeah. He, you printed out the stuff off your email?
Yeah.
Oh, man, you're so responsible.
I wouldn't even tell you. I thought I was printing up something else, and I actually hit print on it. When it came out, my daughter brought it to me, and she said, here's your stuff. I just put it with my stuff. I'm gonna maybe somewhere. Saving that email for like a week now. I was gonna get to it, gonna get to it. Barely made it today. I had to go to a funeral in Holland, and I barely made it back in time, so. I'm glad I, you know, with everybody else, I'm glad.
We went over it often, I think three is the most you can be missing.
I think they knew that.
That's what I think it was, they all got together.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had the commission, we had our work agenda, the work session agenda, and then that has the, the basics on there. This is more the detail of it, so we've got the detail. So now the, the next one, the zoning requirements for sanitation businesses falls under, one right in the middle there. Sanitation businesses are listed as allowed as a special land use in C two, in section eleven, three M. They are not listed in chapter twelve, nor does chapter sixteen provide specific standards for them. Kurtz disposal was granted to special land use based on the fact that similar uses were permitted in the D one industrial district. Section twelve, two Q allows for uses similar to other light industrial uses to be approved. Boy, there's a lot to absorb there.
When they approved Kurtz the first time, they also added it to something. What did they add it to?
I knew they added it to C two.
Oh, okay, they did not add it to industrial, where.
Correct.
Which is where that is, okay. So this eleven point three M is then, when they added it to that?
Yes.
Okay. Oh yeah, eight with twenty. Why'd they add it there? I mean, if they were approving it in the industrial zone, why'd they add it in the commercial zone?
It might be okay in a commercial zone.
Well, now it is. It's a special land use permitted.
They might have thought that since it was similar to other uses in the industrial, they didn't need to add it.
Oh, I see.
Since there's precedent there. But then have it allowable in C two districts as a special use.
I was looking to see where the other, one of the other sanitation companies parks his trucks and works on them.
Like one over, right on one twenty there, if I can.
There's one.
I can't tell exactly where that lot is, because of jambalaya of the sowings in that, in that mess.
And that one, the, the guy in the yellow house there was going to, I can't remember what, what it is now, what it was. I think he wanted it commercial, but he lives there.
Chester's.
Yeah, Chester's is in behind.
He takes a lot behind what looks like an auto repair shop. It's a little funky.
He's got the red and white checked. Great building out there, easy, just one of them. I remember the conversation from this was that everybody was saying, well, we shouldn't have it in certain spots, and we don't want it in this spot. And then we're all thinking, how do you have a community without sanitation? And then we kind of opened it up to, well, maybe we needed to have it in two? If that's the reason why it was, I don't know.
I think the main issue would be that they're not, they're allowed, but there's no standards for special land use.
So they added it to C two, but they made no standard, and they didn't add it to D one?
Correct.
Okay. So they.
We could add it to D one as well.
Well, then we also need, it's the standards.
And then come up with standards. I can look through, see if there's ordinances that's classified as sanitation businesses. I think it'd be a good idea to include trash, recycling, pickup, but also septic, and those kind of private utilities. That's the needed.
Yep.
In areas like this.
Or pull from other townships or?
Yeah, see if I can find anything close by.
That helps so much when you see.
Expand my search.
What everybody is. And then try to pick one that is the simplest and most understandable, rather than needing to pull out a sliding. I just, I need those where I don't, I'm reading it, and I read it four times, and I thought, I still don't get it.
These municipal sanitation companies that service our township, they don't take garbage to our garbage facility, do they, Russell Road?
No, I believe they take them out on Apple.
That's what I thought. They have to, they fill their trucks, then they drive them all the way out, Apple, and come back and. So what, what they do maintain in our township is really a yard to keep their trucks, maintain their trucks, work on their trucks.
It was the, the cleaning of the trucks was part of it, because they were saying, do they spray it into, at the site? Or do they take it off-site and have to spray it, you know, and whether they're stored wet or full, they can't be stored wet or full.
Okay.
They have, there's, there's some things in there that I know that, that we went over last time because of the situation you're talking about.
And they store refuse bins, residential bins.
Yep.
They inventory those, I know. Okay.
And it was more, it was a lot of older conversation, you know, whether.
Really? Yeah.
And that was, that was.
I noticed some, some services offer recycling bins, others do not. We don't like community standard recycling for.
A burn barrel allows you to recycle it.
I say that. That's a little bit late. It's not good.
Alright, so what, what brought this to anybody's attention, I guess is my question. Is this something you found, or?
That's one we were talking about.
Kurtz.
We were going over Kurtz, site plan review. It was brought up.
And what we're trying to do is create a cleaner standard?
Yeah.
Then you could take it out, we need, or add it in it as that's the standard for whatever, wherever it is.
It's just, it's kind of a moving target. If you say it's allowed as a special land use, and then you say there's standards for special land use, if they don't provide those standards.
Yeah.
That's just one of those cleanup, cleanup ordinance items.
Always nice to have a blueprint of a success story to mimic.
I think that's what he'll, what he'll generally do is he'll pull from the other townships.
Yeah.
Municipalities, and then we can kind of look at it and see the way they read, and we can kind of plagiarize from whichever ones we, we feel that fits, kind of our intent. Simple yet, with enough explanation for.
I would prefer to use the term adopt. Right.
We can, we can.
Get it. Best practices.
In this case, dude, I don't think there's any legal standing that we can't take theirs and put it here, so. Cut and paste?
Yeah.
Alright, so I think that one, has that enough direction on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Alright, let me move to, let's see, lot coverage and interpretation. And I can kind of bring you to where we have this as an item. We have the general process that we use when we're kind, we're basically figuring out how you come to lot coverage.
Talking about zoning.
Correct, so if we're talking whether it's zoning, or planning commissioner, anybody, when we say, we all use the term lot coverage. Here's how it's calculated, or at least our process for it. So what we've, we've come up with, what we'd like to do is get something official to where we can define it. So that when we all talk about it, and then it goes to the zoning board of appeals, that they interpret it the same way. Or if Stephen has it, though, he's doing something, we all use the same thing, which is, I think we, we kind of came up with, and I use the way that Jesse explained it to me. Which is you take the lot specifications and post player square footage, and then you figure out the buildings and all the things that are going onto the property. Get your square footage there and just do it as a straight percentage. And then we have to stay within, if it's a thirty percent lot coverage, then you must be under, you know, thirty or under. And, and working from that. That's, that's kind of what I think we're, we're trying to work toward, is some, some way that we define that as the township, so that we all use the same. When we say that, we use certain words.
Yeah.
That the interpretation can be a little.
Fuzzy.
Yeah.
I think the, I also have to exclude from the lot area, the road rights of way and easements. So I have to exclude the thirty-three feet from the center line times the width of the parcel. The GIS acreage often includes to the center line, so I have to take that out as well for this square footage.
So when we're looking at the, sometimes we'll get the site plans to review. That will be our, our way of trying to, to calculate that. If it's a site plan, a lot of times it doesn't take that into account. Things like Stephen was saying, that is right away, if he can give us the, the numbers, we just have a way of calculating. So that we all say the same thing, so no matter which group would be looking at that number, we'd have set numbers. It may be our numbers divided out and. have set numbers, and they'd be our numbers divided out, and that's it. Well, I counted this, and someone else figured it that, one could approve and one could deny. We don't want to have that.
Are there, are there any curb balls in that? For example, the guy, remember the guy that had the right of way, and he had to move his solar farm over? Or the guy that has a pond? Do they use any curb balls, like buildable property, or is it just the shape of it?
But the only major curb ball in regards to lot coverage is in 9.5C. There's also a similar provision in R1 districts.
Did you read it?
Where it says...
Is it lengthy?
No, it says, open unenclosed decks or walkways constructed of a pervious material with spaces which prevent water to flow through shall not be included in the lot coverage. And then subsection 2 says, the maximum square footage of decks and walkways described as excluded shall not exceed 300 square feet. Kind of limits that. And there's really two ways to read that. Either a deck not exceeding 300 square feet is excluded from the lot coverage, or any deck not excluded, not exceeding 300 square feet is excluded, or a maximum of 300 square feet total of decks is excluded. And that, that became a hot topic because I approved two decks under 300 square feet.
Yeah.
A piece, but totally more than 300 square feet, when added into another existing 144 square foot deck on a lot that was over coverage. So I excluded that from the lot area and from the lot coverage. And then that was appealed. And zoning board appeals determine that it's a total cumulative of 300, not 300 per deck. So that's kind of some language that could be cleared up.
You're confused.
Kind of just adding, even adding in cumulative total of all that's...
So this example, the 300 square foot, that's really a constraint that our building code has. Like, that's, that's the max.
It's a bit of an exception, just to allow at least 300 square feet of deck to be excluded. Kind of provides a little bit of an exception, but it's also vague and can be interpreted two different ways.
They're already dealing with pretty small lot sizes in that area anyways.
Yeah.
So that makes a lot of sense. But they cleared that up, cumulative.
Cumulative.
That word.
Yeah.
I go to college.
Yeah.
And then in three, it's, you know, the decks, three is pretty clear where the 300 total doesn't apply to that because it's a walkway going down to the lake, doesn't, isn't counted on top of that. Yeah, that can be something that's worth cleaning up in the future.
So you're saying the suburbage would be, that's cumulative square footage, it's decks?
Something like that.
Okay.
Or just saying, yeah, cumulative over 300 square feet of decks can be, may be excluded from most of the coverage calculation.
That sounds reasonable.
I don't live on Lake, so...
But it's also, it's also in, sorry, R1 district.
Okay.
There's similar language in the R1 district. So that would also be cleaned up to be the same as, as cleaned up in the lake residential district. I think it's R1 and not R2. I'm going to verify that.
Something in my zoning book is missing pages.
I found mine was just not, section nine, I was missing only one page.
Yeah, because I, here's nine, nine, one, and then the next page is nine, I'm missing one page.
Is that from the pages I gave you from the updated, the updated pages that the lawyer sent?
No. No, maybe I, I just realized I never put those in, so maybe that'll be the same page.
Okay, that might be it.
Does that sound, clean those two?
Yeah, just clean them off.
Yeah, everything we can do to clean.
Unless you feel it should have been, you know, unless, unless you feel it's 300 per deck. But if you feel it's 300 cumulative...
I think it is cumulative. I, I think it would be cumulative.
Especially if it's been cleaned up since I, yeah, since that was the intent.
Because I feel like it would say, I feel like it would say, as excluded above shall not exceed 300 square feet each, if they meant each. So I think it means all of them.
Yeah. I, that's kind of why, I guess, we, that, that, that discussion, when we had a lawyer that was here representing one of the people, and that was where we got into, you know, the definition of the...
Did they, did they want it to be each deck, or did they want it to be cumulative?
No, they did not want it to be.
I didn't think so.
So the other, the interpretation, well, that's where we were getting our interpretation versus the legal interpretation. And we, we just want a clean interpretation.
Yes.
So that is...
Yes, so it's easier.
We don't need lawyers to handle this type of...
That would be nice.
All those in favor? That's all good?
Yes.
Let's clean it.
All right, let's clean it. All right, then here's...
You know, if, if this is a lot of work, Steve, I could come in and help you, but maybe with the nomenclature, and then we present it back to the planning groups, and this is what Steve and I came up with. Because this is hard to do in this setting, to read it back and forth. And it seems like we're not getting anywhere. We, we recognize there's an issue, we want to fix it. Steve's got a lot of homework on his plate.
The thing that helps is when ideas are brought rather than the problem.
Yeah.
The problem is, we can sit here and go, hmm, or we come up with five ideas, and then we don't know if any of them really...
Yeah.
We have, we have some thought put into it.
I would suggest a draft of, to resolve that, and then just, what do we think? And maybe it needs a couple of final tweaks, and boom, done. I have trouble going back and forth from chapter to chapter. It's just me.
Well, and you can see why, because you can find, thou shall not here, and then thou shall here, and then we have to go, which one are we going with? And that's our, so we have to find those and cross referencing. And I think that's where I always have the issue, especially like when you read that one that we just went through, the zoning requirements for sanitation business, it's in multiple places.
Right, right. That's a great example.
So we need to, we need to just flip and draw and define so we can get that.
Okay.
All right, let's go on to the last one, the terms ground level and grade are as used in the zoning requirements. And again, this goes back to this last case where we had, we looked at it, and the definitions were interchangeable, at the same time interpreted different, if that makes sense. So that's where we got to, we had, we had one group saying it meant the same thing, another group, the lawyer applied his interpretation, and we had our interpretation, and then we had multiple interpretations.
So the exact phrase ground level appears like five or six times in the ordinance. All but one are in the section pretending that deck's 4.530. So they're all in the same section that was added in, I think, 2017. And the other mention is in a definition of the term parking lot. And it says that the parking lot is a ground level. It says that it's ground level and finished material is ground level.
Can I interject the comment here?
Yes.
I would think that in the discipline of becoming a civil engineer, this is in the first semester. And there's a, there's a legal or there's a time-tested proven definition that we could use and insert it here. We don't need to create a new definition. I'm sure it's already out there, right? Architects and engineers probably use it all the time, survey companies. I, I would just caution us about recreating the wheel and if there's something already there that is, you know, universally adaptive.
So what was the issue here? So the person...
So I measured, I use the definition of grade to inform my interpretation of ground level, what ground level was.
Okay.
And a grade is the surface of the earth or finished material located adjacent to the structure. So I used an existing concrete pad.
Okay.
As finished material, and also the top of a retaining wall as finished material. The boards, ZBA, seem to agree that the top of the pad could be considered ground level or grade, but the top of the retaining wall wouldn't be, it would be the dirt behind the retaining wall that would constitute the ground level or grade as the finished material.
How did this affect the person?
Yeah, where does this come into play?
It was the next door neighbor.
So the neighbor thought the dirt was too high, or the retaining wall was too high, or...
The neighbor thought the deck exceeded eight inches above ground level.
If you look at...
Oh.
And see here, this is the wrong way. This was coming out from a concrete pad.
Drain is...
He then continued on the top of a, the wall was here, and the wall would be really an improvement that you're building on top of the structure, not the grade, if that makes sense. You're actually not, you're no longer set to the pad. You're continuing the pad by continuation of... So they were saying, if that's the case, he could just continue to build things out farther and say that's a continuation.
That's, they wouldn't be able to build a deck on top of a deck and call the deck grade.
Yes.
There would be a...
Yes.
He was being a little ridiculous in that.
Using...
See, this is the word, actually, that's probably a better, better picture.
Oh, the pads back here.
Yes. So the pad ended, and then they continued the deck onto the retaining wall. So by definition...
Without its separate footers.
Correct. So he said, they did put foot, footers in here, but the fact is, the original purpose was that they had to stay on the pads. We went back to the pad based on that was grade, the ground level at that point.
Is the, is the deck sitting on there?
Yes.
How did they...
No, it was, it was suspended above the retaining wall.
Oh!
It wasn't supported by the retaining wall.
I was going to say, how did they even pass the building inspection?
It was, it was a stopover that was in place.
What does ground or grade have anything to do with that? That's where I'm confused.
I was considering the top of the retaining wall to be ground level or grade, and that grade and ground level are interchangeable. And the township attorney did say that those are interchangeable terms for ordinance interpretation.
But you can use either or. He said you could, you could, it could be argued either way. So...
He said that for the, the lot coverage.
Oh, the lot, okay. Okay. I was thinking, if he was saying this, we're really going to start splitting.
No, he said that grade and ground are interchangeable.
Yeah, they are. The grade is the ground. I mean, you can...
Yeah.
Jesse will have something to say about this, but...
Well, I'm going with minor patients coming with the ZBA.
Yeah, that if not the retaining wall, it would be the soil in the retaining wall or behind the retaining wall.
Behind the retaining wall.
Yes. Yeah, it's...
How did this come back to you, Steve? Did our building inspector take photos and, or did the client...
I think the neighbor took those photos.
Oh, is there a dispute?
Yes.
Yeah.
They think the deck is too high.
I wonder if they're so articulate.
Is that the problem? Or that's too far out, or it's too high up?
It was over lot coverage, too high up.
Okay.
Too far out.
Plus, there was a, they were too close to the lot line. There was setback issues. There was, there were several things in this.
Deck, decks under eight inches can be within the required setback.
Oh.
But in order to have a deck between your house and the lake, it essentially has to be eight inches above grade or less. Because accessory buildings...
It's basically just a deck sitting on the ground, basically.
Yep.
Yeah. It's not bad that unusually obscures the neighbor's view.
Yeah, obscured, unusually obscured.
Mary, I'm just...
Would you like to look at these?
No, I'm, I'm interested.
You know, you're dying to see them.
I...
That's essential. I could see it's... We expect you to be a crack engineer, putting two of your improvements after this.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think grade and ground are the same thing.
Yeah.
In most cases, they are. I think in most cases, they are. And this is one of those cases where it wasn't.
So finished, finished material wouldn't necessarily be the top of the retaining wall, it would be what's behind it.
Right.
Then we have people on our lake dragging sand up to recreate grade. That's going to give us...
I hope they have a EQ for that.
Yeah. Because you can't do that. The ordinance doesn't allow you to do that, and that would be considered grade. Because you're allowed to change the topography. That is reasonable to develop a site. But yeah, definitely need to have a EQ.
So the issue here is would be...
Now I understand the complexity.
It's a can, correction, correction.
So that, that was where...
Yeah. He said that, thank you.
That was our issue, is trying to determine the age of the wall. Because they said it has to be eight above grade. It no longer was eight above grade when they used the retaining wall. That makes sense.
Yeah.
You know what? Is there anything else?
Don't, don't, so.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Except...
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourn.